Wasn't that great, guys?
Yeah.
And they were talking about, "Who is this guy? Who is this guy? Who is this guy?" That's John Ziegler. Where's John? John's right back there. And when we're talking about this today, people have to understand that there was so much going on with this whole situation. And a lot of the focus with Joe is on 2001. And as I mentioned, Jerry was found guilty and he is serving his time. But there's a lot of other stuff that surrounds this that we have to find the truth on. And really, that's our goal. Now, we'll bring up Eileen Morgan. Her bio is in your program, and I know you can read, so don't need to read it. And some very interesting information. Thank you. Eileen Morgan.
It is a great honor that I've been invited here by Franco to present to you today. And it is a great privilege to be among this group and to be a part of a community that is willing to stand up for justice in the face of adversity when it is not the popular thing to do. Jerry Sandusky sexually abused many children for many years. He was tried by his peers, convicted, and is now serving his sentence. And we are grateful that justice is finally being served. Today, we are investigating and dissecting Penn State's culpability. Although we are here to refute the mainstream narrative of Penn State's and Joe Paterno's involvement in this scandal, and we do desire to reverse the gross injustices that have plagued our school over the past year, there is something more. You all need to know we are seeking the truth. And I don't mean just the truth that we hope will one day restore the roar to our alma mater or that will restore the wins back to our beloved coach, that will re-erect his statue, that will renew Joe Pa's legacy, and that will hopefully restore the brokenness of our community. No, we seek the truth for the victims so that the agencies that failed in 1998 will not be able to fail again and fail others in the future. If we accept this narrative that the media, the Free Report, the NCAA, and our most esteemed Board of Trustees has dictated, and if we just move on from here, taking one for the team and accepting these false accusations, then we have failed the children even more. If the entire truth of the Sandusky scandal is not unearthed, then the reality and magnitude of his crimes will stay buried forever, leaving innocent children in harm's way with no voice. So today, I'm going to discuss a few points regarding the Free Report for the 1998 investigation. And we're going to discuss the official's knowledge of this incident in light of Pennsylvania's statutes regarding child abuse reporting and examining the content of the emails. Sandusky's retirement, we're also going to look at and what that tells us. And we're going to touch upon the comparison of Mike McQuerry's testimonies, and then we're going to touch on whether this was a cover-up or not. Free was retained to conduct a full, fair, and completely independent investigation into the facts and circumstances of this investigation. And remember, the Free Report was used by the NCAA to levy unprecedented sanctions against Penn State. This was the overall conclusion that Free provided, and it shocked us all. Our most saddening and sobering finding is a total disregard for the safety and welfare of Sandusky's child victims by the most senior leaders at Penn State. These men at Penn State failed to take any steps for 14 years to protect children from Sandusky. These men, including Paterno, repeatedly concealed critical facts relating to Sandusky's child abuse from the authorities. The evidence shows that these four men also knew about a 1998 criminal investigation of Sandusky relating to sexual misconduct. I have a question for you. Why would four men, proven over years to have honor and integrity, having invested years working for a world-class institution, band together and risk their livelihoods, their reputations, and put innocent children in harm's way for the sake of a low-life child abuser? It's preposterous. They had nothing to gain. Was this a full and fair investigation? Only three of the 19 key witnesses were interviewed. And Free stated that the most important evidence in this investigation were three emails, three very vague emails. An interesting fact that I read was where Free said he analyzed over 3.5 million documents pertaining to this investigation. When you do the math, that means for their eight-month-long investigation, Free analyzed over 2,000 pieces of evidence every hour for eight hours a day, seven days a week, for eight months. That's assuming they had all the 3.5 million documents to start with, which we know they did not. We are going to look at four of the key findings that Free came up with in 1998. The first one is that Spanier, Schultz, Paterno, and Curly were kept informed of the investigation. The second one is despite their knowledge of criminal investigation, that they took no action to limit Sandusky's access to the facilities. Third, that Spanier and Schultz failed to report the 1998 investigation to the Board of Trustees. Four, Sandusky was convicted of several assaults after the 1998 incident, and some of these assaults could have been prevented had Sandusky been prohibited from the facilities. We need to look at Pennsylvania state law. The first statute deals with the legality to release information pertaining to child abuse investigations. The second statute is regarding persons to whom child abuse information can be available. The first key finding states that while no information indicates university leaders interfered with the investigation, Spanier, Schultz, Paterno, and Curly were kept informed of the investigation. There were 11 significant events in this investigation; however, just three were communicated from Schreffler and Harmon to Schultz. After the first day of the investigation, communications from Harmon to Schultz involved reports of activities and/or plans of the Department of Public Welfare and the Child and Youth Services. Most police investigative activities, including the two stings, were not reported to PSU officials. Curly, after the initial update, received just one update on May 14th. He did not receive any other updates on the investigation for a period of 24 days. Graham Spanier, after the initial report, which he was only CC'd on, did not receive the updates during the course of the investigation. Gary Schultz, after the initial report on May 4th, received just two updates, on May 5th and May 13th. Joe Paterno received no updates. The two emails we're going to look at, which were two of the three of the most important evidence of this investigation, the first was from Curly to Schultz. "I've touched base with the coach, keep us posted." Free alleges that Coach is Paterno. Jerry was still coaching at this time and was always referred to as Coach. Joe was always referred to as Joe. But assuming it was Paterno, what details are actually disclosed by Touchbase? And remember, the Pennsylvania law prohibited Curly and Paterno from knowing details. The second of those two emails was from Curly to Schultz. "Anything new in this department? Coach is anxious to know." Free alleges Coach again is Paterno. The subject line of this email is Jerry. "Sandusky is the one who is being investigated and would be anxious." Spanier was only CC'd on the very first email and the very last email when the case was closed. He did not respond to any emails, and there was no indication that he knew of the investigation or knew the details. And again, Pennsylvania statute prohibited Curly and Spanier from knowing the details. So with the first key finding, we can conclude that based on the timeline of the significant events and communications flow with respect to the 98 investigation, these four men were not kept informed of the details of this investigation. Key point number two: Despite their knowledge of the criminal investigation of Sandusky, they took no action to limit Sandusky's access to the Penn State facilities. The 1998 police file is labeled administrative information and not a criminal or child abuse investigation. There is no direct evidence that Joe Paterno was ever informed or updated of the investigation. There were just two email updates over the 37-day investigation, one from Harmon to Schultz and the other from Schultz to Curly. There were two notifications of closure, one from Harmon to Schultz and the other from Schultz to Spanier and Curly. The emails do not contain specific information regarding the nature of the incident. One cannot ascertain that it was child sexual abuse or even a child abuse investigation from reading the emails. There's only one instance in the emails where police involvement is noted. Content regarding the details of the investigation in Exhibit 2D was deleted by Gary Schultz before he relayed it to Tim Curly. So from fact, excuse me, key finding number two, the conclusion is based on the contents of the email, Paterno, Curly, and Spanier had no knowledge of sexual abuse allegations against Sandusky in 1998, nor did they know it was a criminal investigation. Therefore, there would be no justifiable reason to limit Sandusky's access. Key finding number three: Spanier and Schultz failed to report the 98 investigation to the Board of Trustees. Child abuse reports are confidential and may only be released to a select group of individuals in accordance with those two statutes. This key finding reached by Free Report is in violation of the statutes regarding sharing of child abuse reports. The email evidence contained in the Free Report at 2B and 2E supports the fact that the details of the investigation were not shared with officials. Those are on the screen. You can see the email from Schultz going to Curly, and the part in red was deleted, which discusses the Department of Welfare investigator and also discusses that the child had the same account as Jerry, and Jerry also saying that he had done this with other children in the past. It is also notable that the subject of the email of Exhibit 2D, composed by Schultz and responded by Harmon, is Ray confidential. This is corroborating evidence that communications between the University Park Police and Gary Schultz were kept confidential as required by law. The SIC, which is the Special Investigative Council from Free, turned over its email evidence to the Attorney General for the purposes of filing additional charges. Had the evidence revealed that Schultz or any other PSU official violated the confidentiality statute, they would have been charged with a third-degree misdemeanor. So regarding key finding number three, Spanier and Schultz were prohibited from sharing information with the Board of Trustees. Key finding number four: Sandusky was convicted of several assaults after the 98 incident. Some of these assaults might have been prevented had Sandusky been prohibited from bringing minors to the university facilities. The 1998 incident was investigated by law enforcement and child welfare advocates who determined that Jerry Sandusky was not guilty of committing sexual assaults against two children. On or about June 1st, the District Attorney's Office informed Penn State of the decision that no charges would be filed. Penn State officials were not aware of the specifics, as we have already proven. So regarding key finding number four, because no charges were brought about, there was no reason to consider to prohibit Jerry from bringing children to campus. Another fact is, University Park Police Detective Schreffler and Department of Public Welfare Laro met with Sandusky in June of 1998 to tell him not to shower with boys anymore. This information was never relayed to Schultz, who would have relayed it to Curly, and therefore they did not know that this was mandated by them, that he should not be showering with boys. And so there was no way for them that they knew that they had to monitor this. So based on Pennsylvania statutes and evidence, it is clear that the key Penn State officials were unaware of the nature of the 1998 incident. The email evidence in the Free Report does not contain any specific information that would reveal the nature of the investigation, and in accordance with law, they were not allowed to disclose this. And also, President Spanier could not legally disclose the information of the 1998 incident to the Board of Trustees per the Pennsylvania law. In addition, Free even states that the lead detective was handling the investigation so that he would not have to worry about Ole Main sticking their noses into the investigation. The police wanted to handle this on their own and not involve Spanier or the other Penn State officials. Evidence shows that they did not involve Spanier or the Penn State officials with any details of the investigation. Final thought on 98. The University Park Police, State College Police Department, Children and Youth Services, Department of Public Welfare, the prosecutor and DA, all handled the 1998 investigation of Sandusky. No charges were brought against Sandusky by these agencies. If there was a cover-up in 1998, it was by the local authorities and not by Penn State officials. Ray will have more later in his presentation about the role of these agencies. I'd now like to talk a little bit about Sandusky's retirement. At least as early as February 1998, this is several months before the incident that happened in 98 with the shower, Paterno and Sandusky were discussing Sandusky's retirement. In 99, Sandusky retired and asked for special perks after he retired, including access to the training and working facilities. In a handwritten note by Paterno on this proposal, it reads, "Is this for personal use or for Second Mile kids? No to Second Mile. Liability problems." First, Free only makes a small mention of this at the bottom of Page 51, but this is very important to show that Paterno did not want Second Mile kids around the football facility since it would be an insurance liability to Penn State. It is key to note this, that Paterno did not want the Second Mile kids around the football facility, because Free alleges that witnesses consistently told the SIC that Paterno was in control of the football facilities and knew everything that was going on. As head coach, he had the authority to establish permissible uses of his football facilities. If Paterno had control of his football facilities and had authority to establish permissible uses, then why was his order that he did not want second-child kids to be using his facility not enforced? Free wants us to believe that Paterno was all-powerful and over all of Penn State, but he did not want Sandusky to bring kids to his facility, yet that stipulation was not part of the retirement agreement. Apparently, Paterno is not omnipotent, contrary to Free and all those witnesses. The SIC found no evidence to indicate Jerry's retirement was related to the 98 investigation. In February 98, they started the discussions of retirement. In May of 98 was the shower incident that brought in the police. Jerry was re-employed for the 99 season, and then Jerry officially retired the winter of 99-2000. I want you to look at this at another perspective. If Joe and the rest knew and wanted to cover it up that Sandusky was a child molester, in May of 1998, he and they would have wanted to distance themselves from Sandusky as quickly as possible. Joe most certainly would have sped up and forced the retirement process, although we know from Free the retirement had nothing to do with the 98 investigation. And thirdly, Spanier, Curly, Joe would have never given him unlimited access to the football facilities. However, this is what took place. Joe gave Sandusky an option. When they were discussing retirement, he said, "You either need to be a coach full-time or you need to work at Second Mile full-time." Therefore, he was not distancing himself by allowing the coaching option to be on the table. Sandusky was re-employed for the 1999 season. They did not force or speed up his retirement. And Penn State gave him unlimited access to the football facilities. The only conclusion is that Paterno, Curly, Schultz, and Spanier did not know the details of the 98 investigation, and there was no cover-up. I have a handout for you all, but I don't think it's here yet, so we will get that to you before you leave today. And it's a brochure on the comparison of Mike McQuerry's testimonies. The first one, I don't know if you've seen some of these pictures, but this would be what the schematic of the testimony from Mike during the Jerry Sandusky trial. So he first comes in, and he goes to his locker, he hears noises on his way in, he looks over his shoulder in the mirror, and at a reflection, 45-degree angle, sees into the shower the boy and Sandusky. The second shows the second look that he takes in because he didn't know what he was, he wanted to make sure he was seeing what he was seeing, and so he took a couple steps forward to look directly into the shower. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't know why it went to auto. Let's see, where am I? Okay, that one, that one. The third one, on E, is the third view that he took and looked directly into the shower, sorry, closer. And this is where he said the boy and Jerry were separated, and then he walked out. This shows the testimony of Dr. Dranoff, in which he says that Mike told him, when he went to the locker room, he heard noises, he went to his locker, he looked over and saw a boy looking around, and then an arm pulled him back. And then he looked a second time, and Jerry Sandusky was walking out of the shower. The discrepancies of Mike's testimonies. The grand jury presentment states that Mike McQuerry saw a young boy being subjected to anal rape by Jerry Sandusky, and that Mike reported what he had seen to his father, John, and to Joe Paterno, Tim Curly, and Gary Schultz. Mike testified later on two more occasions under oath that he never saw that act. Paterno said that Mike told him Jerry was fondling, or whatever you may call it, a boy. But Mike also testified that he never saw Jerry's hands nor that he saw Jerry fondling the boy's genitals. Mike testified at the Jerry Sandusky trial, he looked three times, and the boy and Jerry saw him on the third look, and they were separated looking at him. But he told the grand jury he had only looked twice, and that the boy saw Mike during the second look while still against the wall in sexual position. And then Mike left immediately and did nothing to stop it. Mike never testified to the grand jury about slamming the locker door, nor that the two had separated, nor that he looked a third time. The slamming of the locker door to stop it was added later because he was getting hammered for the way he handled it, he said in an email. Dr. Dranoff testified that Mike said he saw a boy look around, made eye contact, and then an arm pulled him back. Then Mike looked again and saw Jerry Sandusky walking out. This is in harmony with what Spanier said was reported to him by Curly and Schultz, which was reported to them by Paterno. And remember, Dr. Dranoff was the second person Mike gave the account to that very Let's ask ourselves if there was a cover-up. Was there an effort to conceal? Mike told his father, Dr. Dranoff, Paterno, Curly, and Schultz. He was concealing nothing. His father and Dr. Dranoff told him to tell Paterno. They were concealing nothing. Paterno tells Curly and Schultz. He was not concealing the information. Curly and Schultz tell Spanier, and all three agree to report the incident to Second Mile President Rakowitz. They were not concealing the information. Rakowitz was on the outside of the university and was the person who had the wherewithal to limit or stop Sandusky's interaction with Second Mile children. None of these men, Sands, Rakowitz, kept quiet or concealed the evidence. Mike testified, "He told others and was never told not to tell others." If the Penn State officials were covering this up, they would have silenced Mike. Mike testifies that Curly nor Schultz ever told me not to talk about this to others. Neither of them made any effort to prevent me from talking to anyone in the world. If Paterno, Curly, Schultz, and Spanier were trying to cover this up, one or more of them would have unequivocally told Mike to never speak about this again. Free says the motivation for the cover-up was to avoid bad publicity. What is this based on? There was absolutely no, excuse me, there was no publicity from the 1998 investigation. In 2001, Sandusky was no longer a Penn State coach. He was with Second Mile full-time, and the child was a participant of Second Mile. Therefore, the Second Mile would have been the focus and would have received the bad publicity. I go back to that question in the beginning. Why would these four men, proven over the years to have honor and integrity, band together, risking their livelihoods, reputations, and putting children in harm's way, all for the sake of a child abuser? It makes no sense. I just want to discuss a little bit about the sanctions. The NCAA used the Free Report in lieu of their investigation. Erickson agreed to the sanctions because of Free's findings. The Board of Trustees has never formally accepted the Free Report. And when asked, "When was the Board going to review the report?", Pete said they are not going to read it or review it. How can you accept unprecedented sanctions that will cost your school millions of dollars without reviewing the very basis of the punishment that you paid for to have produced? Erickson was asked last week at the National Press Club about this very issue, and he said they accepted the Free Report but did not necessarily agree with everything. Did the Board of Trustees read the Free Report or not? Well, if they did, then they need to answer for and respond to all of these faulty, erroneous, and unsupported findings by Free. If they did not, then they need to explain how they could freely agree to the NCAA actions and not challenge the penalty. Everyone of Free's findings that were used by the NCAA to sanction Penn State had no substantiating evidence and/or had contradictory evidence and/or had lack of legal basis. Per Pennsylvania law and the evidence, the Penn State officials did not know the details of 98, and there was no evidence of a cover-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen, and everybody better hope they have nothing in their closet if Eileen, if she gets on the trail. You know what? I forgot to mention last time Anthony Lebrano. I mean, can you picture him hollering at that TV? Boy, when you look at her presentation, I mean, Mike had a lot to say. A lot to say, and it changes quite a bit each time. Now, we will bring up Ray Blehar, and he'll try to answer some more of these questions, but believe me, afterwards, you still will have a lot more questions. Ray Blehar.
Thank you, and thank everyone for, let's see if we can get this up here. Thanks, everyone, for coming out today. If you'd have told us a year ago that we'd all be sitting in a theater in Pittsburgh talking about the firing of Joe and this situation, nobody would have believed it. In fact, I can't believe I'm standing here today addressing you, because in the summer, when the Free Report came out, I read the report, and if you've read my bio, I've been reading reports for about 27 years, figuring out what they say and what they should say and shouldn't say. And so, when I read the Free Report, it hit me as, wow, this thing is about as bad a report as you could write. So with the spare time that I had, I penned a letter to Rod Erickson and said, "Here's about 10 things you can rebut in the Free Report." A lot of the things that Eileen had covered, that there was no basis for them to ban Jerry from the showers in 98. There was clearly no fault of Penn State. And then I was pretty much surprised and shocked when our board didn't rebut the Free Report. So I said, "Well, that didn't sit well." And I said, "Well, I'll do it. I'll write a report, and I'll rebut the report, much like Eileen did with hers. But the problem is, I'm an investigator. I'm an analyst. I kept running into evidence. I kept finding more things." I thought a report that would take me two weeks to write is still in work. And there's so much wrong that I can't write just one. This will take four reports to probably write down everything that has gone wrong or is... There are so many things, so many players in this. It's a tangled web. So, and all I can say is that it was intentionally that way. Now, because of the way the grand jury presentment was done, can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Everybody's attention was drawn to Mike McQuerry's testimony. That was the most outrageous... That was the most outrageous, the incident was emotionally charged and so we lost our way logically and we didn't think about things as they should be or, or did they make sense? So I'm going to point out another incident that nobody's really talked about yet that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So this was the incident that was in the Lash Building, uh, staff locker room and it was observed by James Calhoun, a janitor, who at the time of the grand jury presentment was in a nursing home because he suffered from dementia and couldn't testify. So this janitor observed Jerry Sandusky performing oral sex on the boy in the shower. That's the long and short of it. And another janitor had to serve as a hearsay witness to say what he saw or what Jim told him. So what's the bottom line? Well, Petroski's hearsay witness testimony has a lot of problems. First, he said he heard about this incident when he read about it in the Center Daily Times in March. Well, that McQuerry incident wasn't published until November, so that doesn't fit. He said he could only see the bottoms of the people's legs when he looked into that shower room. There are no obstructions in the door to that shower room. And he also said that James Calhoun was in that shower when he arrived in the shower room and he therefore had to be in the shower room the whole time Sandusky and the boy were in the shower. Hard to explain why James Calhoun would not have intervened. And it's also, uh, interesting that this story from the grand jury presentment until the trial changed quite a bit. So again, a trial or the two time frames don't match. I did a search of the Center Daily Times, multiple searches, McQuerry, Grad Assistant, you name it. Uh, the earliest I could find is November eighth. So this janitor did not read it in the Center Daily Times in March of 2011. Janitor states he could hear Calhoun cleaning the toilet in that shower room. So here's the shower room, there's where Calhoun had to be. You see the line of sight, you see what Calhoun can't see. He can't see into that corner. Okay, Calhoun was there to clean the urinals directly across from the shower and clean the toilet. So if Calhoun can hear him cleaning the toilet and Sandusky's in there taking a shower with the child, I'm sure that Sandusky can hear him cleaning a toilet as well. So what does Petroski do? He enters the shower room through this only door, back up here, through the only door and the first thing he does is he goes to the sink and he hooks up the hose, the green line is the hose. Then he starts walking toward the shower and at point three, close to the door, he, he realizes Sandusky and the child are in there, drops the hose on the floor, which of course would make a noise. Then he turns and exits the shower and he stays outside at point five in the vestibule. So that's his view. Open shower door, you can see nothing would be blocking the upper bodies of the people in the shower. And we know from the testimony of other victims, Victims One and Four, that anytime there was any disturbance, anybody walked in, Aaron Fisher was, is Victim One, he said he was in the wrestling room at Central Mountain High School, when a coach walked in, Sandusky separated. Victim Four said there was a cipher lock on the door of the assistant coach's locker room. When they heard that cipher lock noise, they would separate. So doesn't make sense that if a janitor walked in with a hose, uh, Sandusky would do anything untoward after, after that would occur. So then here's the rest of the story. So Calhoun stayed in there after Petroski left. The hose is laying there. Based on the lines of sight, Sandusky and the child have to be in the very middle shower because that's the place that would be a common view of both Petroski and Calhoun. So, so what you're saying is that Jim Calhoun, who served in the Korean War and was in battle, who was an able-bodied individual doing manual labor, okay? In a locker room, they're used by not important people at Penn State or not the high-level people, but these are the equipment managers and people like that. He sees an adult that he doesn't even know is Jerry Sandusky. He had asked who he was. So he's watching a fifty-six-year-old man molest a young boy in the shower and he does And then he watches them leave the shower, they get dressed, dried, dried off and dressed and they leave. And then he exits the shower behind them crying and visibly upset. Very difficult to explain. Okay. So then we compare what was presented at the grand jury versus what was presented at the trial. Well, at the grand jury, they were in the assistant coach's locker room. So by trial, it changed to a different locker room. In the assistant coach's locker room, there's a curtain that would obstruct the view. Okay, so would make sense that Petroski could only see the legs, but then you have another problem. If Petroski can see the legs, only the legs, what could Calhoun see? Well, obviously Calhoun can only see what Petroski sees because there's the same obstruction. So they've got a problem. Okay? Grand jury testimony, Petroski's in there cleaning when Calhoun comes in and taps him on the shoulder and says, you'll never believe what I saw. And in this case, Calhoun stayed in the shower the whole time. So why is that different? And then in the first instance, Calhoun is way too emotionally upset to report this to his boss, but in the second version of events, he reported it to his boss. Okay? Very hard to explain. So I'm just here today to say, this doesn't fit with the facts. Okay? There are too many inconsistencies here for this story to be believed. There's something wrong. Okay? And why didn't the former head of the FBI figure this out? He had access to the facilities, I didn't. Okay? So, uh, you know, again, this is, this is evidence that's, one piece that I found that is a truly astounding piece of information. Now, the next thing I'm going to talk about is the thing that really brought us all here today, and that's the grand jury presentment. I almost, I almost mistakenly labeled this Commonwealth versus Penn State, but I changed that. Okay? And, and when you look at the picture, that's really what it is. Because you have the picture of the pedophile, Jerry Sandusky, and then you have Tim and Gary right up there next to him. And there's no way to equate those crimes. So from the get-go, the state is tying this to Penn State. And I think you'll understand why in a few minutes. So what's the bottom line here? Well, again, an emotional crime like child abuse, logic tends to go out the window. Okay? So we read this grand jury presentment that's not put in chronological order. There's a lot of misleading statements. We've covered McQuerry's statement backward and forward, but there's others. There's DPS and, or yeah, DPS, CYS and DPW who both failed but are barely mentioned in this report. And then there's the hearsay testimony that I told you about with the victim eight, doesn't make any sense. So here we are, Penn State getting hammered for our response to the 2001 incident and the police and everybody else who has messed up are not really getting anything out of this. So let's take a look at how this thing was presented to us all. Aaron Fisher, who prefers to be called Aaron Fisher and not Victim One, was abused at Central Mountain. And according to the grand jury testimony, Central Mountain High School did everything right. Okay? Then we have Victim Two, seen in the shower by Mike McQuerry. And of course, that incident was covered up. And then because of that, we have Victims Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, okay, who were all abused by Sandusky in the showers. If Penn State had only intervened when they should have, we could have stopped all this. And then there's this terrible incident in the shower that really shows that Penn State from top to bottom was covering for Sandusky. The showers were, the janitors were afraid to report that incident because the football program was all supremed, it was a cultural issue. Well, it sounds like a pretty convincing story until you put it in chronological order. And then you see that all the abuse happened before any of this was reported to Joe Paterno or to Graham Spanier or to Gary Schultz or to Tim Curly. In fact, what you see is a gap in abuse for about five years after Penn State was told about this. And then Aaron Fisher pops up again in about 2000, 2005. So how would this be perceived if this was how the presentment was put out there? Would this have been Penn State not intervening and many, many boys being abused or would this be something else? What might that something else be? Well, remember, there were two other victims that came forward after this. So to be fair, let's look at those two other victims. Victim Ten, nineteen ninety-seven. Okay? Penn State couldn't have prevented that. They didn't know. Victim Nine, abused in 2006. So that five-year gap is still there. So then what would the question be? What's with this gap? Okay? How is it that nothing happened for five years? Did Jerry Sandusky stop being a pedophile? Why didn't the police find any victims between 2001 and 2005? Maybe the media would have been asking those questions. And if they did, they would have found out that in this case, the police didn't find any victims. That's right. The police did not find one single victim in this case. Let's start at Victim Seven, actually. Victims Seven, Four, Six, Five, and Three were all identified by the mother of Victim She called the police herself after getting a tip or after being contacted by Sarah Ganem, who gave her the name of the investigator. So five victims fell into the police's lap from that woman. Victims Ten and Nine phoned it in themselves. Okay? And the other people that are left are Victims Two and Eight. And there are no victims. Those are the two crimes that the victims haven't been identified. So in the course of a three-year investigation, the police did not find a single victim. That's quite a story. Probably a story that the Attorney General wouldn't want a lot of people to know. So what else was misleading? Well, at Central Mountain High School, they didn't do everything right. When Aaron Fisher and his mother complained to the principal of the school and the guidance council, they were told, go home, think about it. Jerry has a heart of gold. They went immediately to CYS and went on their way to CYS, the school was calling CYS to tell them they were on their way over. CYS was, or the school was doing a CYA. And eventually, um, the Clinton County folks, um, got to the bottom of this and they were the ones who determined that Jerry Sandusky was a child abuser. But it certainly wasn't anything that the school did. In fact, it was Mike Gillum who called the school and told them to ban Sandusky from the premises. So, uh, this school didn't do anything right. And in fact, I think when Gillum followed, followed up with the school to tell them they were banned, it was just kind of like, uh, okay. You know, they, they were more upset that Jerry Sandusky was not going to be an assistant football coach there than they were about Jerry Sandusky being turned in as a child molester. And again, there was the incident at that school in the wrestling room that never got So we get to nineteen ninety-eight and this is a very disturbing slide for me because I called Dr. Chambers to talk to her about what happened. As the story goes, the boy came home with wet hair and that's what upset his mother because she learned that he had showered with Sandusky. Well, no, his hair was dry. He had a crew cut. It was the summer. Or, so his, his hair was dry. They're having a conversation about what he did and as he's leaving the room, he says, Mom, we took a shit, we took a shower, just in case you're wondering why my hair is wet. And the mother knew that was her son's way to say, something's wrong, something's troubling me. Also, if you look at, uh, the research on child sexual abuse, uh, of course, uh, multiple showers, as I said, they're on the bottom, is one of the signs. I'll get to that in a minute. The other one is engaging in a topic about sexual conversations. So, uh, two showers. Okay? That piece of evidence is in Gary Schultz's notes and I've highlighted it over there in yellow. Mother concerned something more. Kid took another shower last night in this AM. Well, that's pretty much a sure sign of molestation. And then there's the other signs in Gary's notes. And what Gary's notes are, are the, the, um, reporting from Schreffler to Harmon to Schultz. So you know that this isn't all the details. This is just the important stuff that the guy at the top needs to know. So Jerry has given the kid clothes. I counted on the four pages about fourteen signs of things that you would consider possible signs of child sexual abuse. So if I can do it, I'm sure that the guys, the people who are the trained investigators from CYS and DPW should have picked it up on those two. Okay? And of course, in the grand jury presentment, it's put forth as, an investigation by Police Detective Schreffler was closed by then Center County District Attorney Ray Greco after there were being noted criminal charges. Well, all right, so CP, uh, CYS and DPW aren't even mentioned, but again, Dr. Chambers, she sent her report to CYS, so they knew that Sandusky was exhibiting grooming behaviors. She gave that report to the University Park Police and she provided an oral report to Childline, which goes to DPW. So all of these organizations knew that a licensed psychologist, PhD, had said Jerry Sandusky's exhibiting grooming behaviors. Okay? DPW ordered a second evaluation and again, the police and the ADA said, no more evaluations, we have the one we need. They brought in an unlicensed counselor to do the evaluation who said, no, Sandusky's just, he's, he's doing what you would normally do if you were a male coach. They, they selected that evaluation over that of a psych, of the licensed psychologist. So Jerry Loro, the DPW investigator, said he couldn't find child abuse. So therefore, if the state can't make a finding of child abuse, the DA can't prosecute a case. The defense attorney would just bring in the DPW investigator to say, no, there's no child abuse here. So this isn't a Greco decision, essentially it's a DPW decision. So another interesting thing. So they didn't mention that DPW and CYS were involved in ninety-eight, but they also did a good job making it hard for you to figure out that there were really six or seven kids who were under, who could have been investigated in ninety-eight. The mother of Victims Six, if you see in Gary's notes, the, the famous Pandora's Box statement. Now, we don't know who originated that statement because it could have been Schreffler, it could have been Harmon, it could have been Gary, it could have been John Miller from CYS. But the long and short of it is, the mother said, these kids all run in a group with Jerry Sandusky. Okay? She identified Victims Three, Four, Five, and Seven to the police. So if she identified them in 2011, she knew who they were in nineteen ninety-eight and that's pretty, pretty logical. The reason it was hard to follow in the grand jury presentment was, if you look on this chart, um, it said Victim Three met Jerry Sandusky in 2000. Well, there's a fall nineteen ninety-nine photo that says, nah, he, he knew him well before 2000. Um, and then, and in the, he testified that his abuse occurred in ninety-nine. You go back to the associations. Okay, Victim Three knew Victim Four. Victim Four didn't know anybody. Victim Five knew Victim Six and some other boys. And as it turned out, they all knew each other. Okay? So we had a group of boys who could have been investigated in nineteen ninety-eight and they weren't. And this, again, the state in the grand jury presentment masked this association. And so what do you know about ninety-eight now? Well, precipitating event has been incorrect all along. It was not wet hair, it was multiple showers. Lots of signs of abuse known to investigators, didn't hear about that. Didn't, didn't hear that there was a possibility of more than two victims in nineteen ninety-eight. Didn't even mention that C- Didn't even mention that CYS and DPW were involved, and that there was no mention of the differing evaluations of the child. So as a person who's done inspector general work, this part of my report has already been sent to the PA Task Force on Child Protection. Senator Representative Scott Petrie, who wants to establish an Office of Child Advocate to oversee CYS and DPW investigations, and the 1998 investigation was travesty. And this office needs to be set up because they failed the kids. There's no two ways about it. So, we're moving on to the next finding, and that was that, in the grand jury presentment where they said, "Penn State never reported this to anyone." All right. Well, Tim and Gary, Gary Schultz and Wendell Courtney both said they reported this to the local CYS. What's interesting is the whole conversation around reporting this to DPW. Well, under the law, you make your report to the local child abuse, child welfare organization, and it's their responsibility under the law to make the report to Childline. So by Gary or the group deciding not to go to DPW, that doesn't mean that they weren't reporting it because Tim and Gary said, "Well, we don't have to go to DPW. We already went to CYS." Okay? So nobody has refuted that Tim and Gary went to CYS. It's the state's burden to prove that they didn't. All right? The state's argument is that there are no records of this complaint in the system. Well, that's because if there's an unfounded abuse complaint, it's expunged from the system. So if Gary and Tim called this in, or Gary and Wendell called this in, and the state sat on it, after 60 days, it just becomes unfounded, and then after 120 days, it's gone. So CYS could have had it and not acted on it. And based on their performance in 1998, I'd say that's not out of the realm of possibility. The investigator from the state, when he checked into the incident, he still thought it was 2002. So when he called DPW and CYS and asked them, "Did an investigation occur?", he was asking about 2002, not 2001. The person he called to DPW was the same guy who investigated the 1998 case, so that's not, he's not very credible. If he was, he'd have been called to testify at the trial. The person he talked to at CYS was Carol Smith. Carol Smith was the assistant director at CYS in 1998. Being the assistant director, it's likely that she had knowledge of that investigation, and she knows what happened there. So I would say it's pretty open, it's a pretty open debate, and the states could have a hard time proving that Wendell and Gary didn't contact CYS. And then, of course, this one that we've beaten to death. Mike, you know, this started the firestorm. We've been over it. They couldn't get a conviction on involuntary deviant sexual intercourse, so Mike's story was not at all convincing to the jury that he witnessed anal intercourse. And so at the end of the day, what do we have? Well, it's a pretty misleading account, the grand jury presentmanism is leading account of the crimes, the timeframes, how each organization responded to this. You know, the police didn't find anybody. That's one of the most amazing things about a three-year investigation. The high school, the child welfare organizations, they fell down on the job. And the only people who really took it seriously once they knew was Penn State. And we saw from the evidence that for some reason, for a period of years, Jerry Sandusky appeared not to be abusing children. So at the end of the day, and again, it's kind of what Eileen said to you, "We've got Sandusky in jail. We had the free report lauded by child protection advocates saying, 'It's doing all these great things at Penn State to make the campus environment safer for kids.'" But what happens to the children of the state of Pennsylvania? The same people who let Jerry Sandusky roam for 14 years, who could have brought him to justice in '98, are still running the system, and that has to change. My investigation is going to continue. Thank you.
On that great, so much information. Listen, we'll take just a short break, just five, 10 minutes. Now, there's coffee, Super Donuts out there. Okay? You know, water. So we'll take a little break, but not too long. Please come back in because we have an interview and a panel discussion, and this is going to be really good stuff, guys. Okay? Thanks.
Jurors arrived, and you are being, they're being passed out right now, so make sure you get one before you leave. And I just wanted to briefly discuss it. So the front panel were like the slides that we showed of the shower schematic and the photos and the different views. When you open it all the way up, you get the three different testimonies of the different witnesses. So you have the grand jury presentment. In the middle is the hearing for the Curly and Schultz investigation, and then on the far right is the Jerry Sandusky trial transcript. And then going down, you have Mike McQuarrie's direct examination, Cross, then his father, is this off? And then Dr. Dreanoff's. On the back, you have the same comparison with Joe, Tim Curly, Gary Schultz, and Graham Spanier. And then on the very back panel are the findings and the discrepancies. What I wanted to let you know is when you open, when you keep, when you open the third panel, so it's like this, you can compare the different testimonies with the photos. So they're right there for you to see. So enjoy, and if you didn't get one, make sure you get one before you leave. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Brown.
One more announcement. Someone was asking for the PowerPoint slides to be available online. They will be available, and my email is on, it's very small, but it's on both sides of this brochure. So you can find it, email me. I'll let you know where it is online.
[inaudible]
Okay, that too. And yours will be too?
Yeah.
And raise us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Just a little bit closer. Put this up in case anybody forgets. Just in case. Okay? Okay, we're going to have a, I'm going to have a, just, you know, have a couple of questions with Rob, and then we'll turn it over, you know, we'll have a panel discussion, and then after that, we'll have a Q and A. Okay? Be second half of our program. So Rob, I have a statement here from the Board of Trustees when they fired Joe Paterno. And they have here that they put, "Our most important reason, by far, for this difficult decision flowed from what we learned on November 5th for the first time from a presentment by a Pennsylvania grand jury about Coach Paterno's early 2011 testimony." Now, we have a number of attorneys that are on our Board of Trustees. How could they accept a presentment?
It is absolutely unbelievable that they would make such a pronouncement. For those that don't know, a grand jury presentment is by no means evidence. It's not admissible in court, ever. A grand jury, the way a grand jury works in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, is that the prosecutor gets to ask witnesses questions. The witness does, may have counsel there, but that counsel isn't allowed to object, isn't allowed to ask their own questions. The person who's being investigated isn't even allowed to be present in the courtroom. The only people allowed in the courtroom are the grand jurors, the prosecutor, the witness, the witness's attorney, and presumably Cynthia Baldwin. But a grand jury, you know, there's a famous, Sol Walker was a famous judge on the New York Supreme Court, and he said, "A grand jury would indict a hand sandwich." And that's absolutely true. A grand jury presentment is the prosecutor drafting a summary that the prosecutor wants to use to get an indictment. It's not testimony. It's not a transcript. It's not even the words of the grand jury.
Well, what do you think about our BOT saying that, then, well, that's their most important reason?
It's absolutely outrageous, to be quite honest, for someone to rely on that. Particularly, if you look back, and I think it was in John Ziegler's presentation, sort of how the media spin changed. Early on, the Attorney General was very critical of the Board of Trustees and their decision to fire Joe, and went so far as to say, "Here's a person that did exactly what he was supposed to do, reported it up the chain, testified truthfully, and he got fired."
Now, not only that, did they do that, but didn't they break a couple sunshine laws by firing Joe Paterno and hiring Erickson?
There's absolutely no question whatsoever that they took action in violation of the sunshine law. And their narrative changed. You know, at one point, they fired Joe. Another point, "Well, we were going to fire him, but we really just were leaving him of his coaching duties, so it really wasn't a termination." And you have to understand the nuances of the sunshine law. Pennsylvania has a law that has limited applicability to Penn State, but it does apply relative to personnel decisions. You must do that in an open forum, at a publicly noticed meeting. You can't do it hidden behind closed doors, which is exactly what they did. Then they tried to correct it. They scheduled what's called ratifying a violation. If you violate the sunshine law, you can fix that violation within 30 days by holding a publicly noticed meeting, properly and held meeting, and then making the decision again. Well, they tried to do that, and they screwed that up. They violated the sunshine law once again in early December.
Now, isn't this the same Board of Trustees that's doing all these new regulations and all these new procedures in place to follow, Anthony? Isn't this the same?
I don't have any comment on that.
Well, John, when we talk about this and look at the sunshine law and firing of Joe Paterno, didn't Joe Paterno do what was right? And this is open for discussion, I guess this is open for everybody.
Well, Franco, to me, where I'm coming from on this whole thing, and I didn't go to Penn State, I live in California. I grew up in Bucks County, Pennsylvania, but I have to say, Penn State was about my third or fourth favorite team. I always liked Joe Paterno, but I'm not coming from this perspective of, "I need to protect Joe Paterno at all costs." I was looking at this and saying, "What the hell is going on here? How can this possibly happen with no evidence? That you're going to destroy a man's life, his legacy, 61 years and all that, in four days? He goes from, as I start the film, he goes from being praised by a clear source inside the prosecution to being fired." Now, let's be very clear. I understand where you guys are coming from about, "Well, the reason the board gave." The reason that Joe Paterno got fired, let's be very clear, was the Board of Trustees wet their pants in the face of a media onslaught that was based on a bunch of bull. All right? That is what happened here. Had the presentment occurred a week later, after Joe Paterno's final home game, when there would not have been this focus of, "Oh, my God, is there going to be a pep rally for the pedophile protector at State College on Saturday?" The Board of Trustees would not have wet their pants. The media would have gotten tired with the story because Thanksgiving would have been the next week. Joe Paterno would have had the opportunity to speak instead of having his press conference canceled, not by Graham Spanier, but by John Serma, who is a completely different entity than Graham Spanier. There was a coup d'etat that occurred two days after the presentment at Penn State, where John Serma took over the university. And I've spoken to Graham Spanier before and after his indictment about this very sequence of events. People do not understand what really transpired here. So to understand the firing, you need to understand all of the inner workings of Penn State, and you need to understand the way the media works. The media are a bunch of morons. They are a bunch of lemmings who do not like to do the work for themselves. They like an easy, understood, juicy narrative.
Okay, we have Bob here to, Mr. Bob, how would you?
Should I turn myself in right now?
No, but how?
You don't know the half of it, John. Please.
Unfortunately, I do.
How would you?
No, you don't.
How would you describe the culture at Penn State?
The culture at Penn State? Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Franco Harris for having me here today on Veterans Day. As you know, Franco does a lot of work that never gets recognized, goes under the radar, but he's done tremendous work with veterans and their families. He's from a military family, and I just wanted to say thank you, Franco, for thanking us.
Thank you, Bob.
And that you remember people who do good things for you. Now, a culture at Penn State, Penn State's actually a very huge entity. Main campus Penn State, branch campuses Penn State, 96,000 students. It's a very big culture. It's a very big organization. It's got, the Alumni Association is very big. It's very varied. I don't know if you can say one particular thing about Penn State that describes the culture in 25 words or less, but, you know, the culture at Penn State has always been, you know, one of the former presidents described it, "Equally inaccessible from any place in the state." We all know that, having driven up there. It's in the middle of a valley, in the middle of a state, in the middle of nowhere. It thinks of itself as, you know, its own entity.
Happy Valley.
Happy Valley in and of itself. Right. It's, I think it's, it depends on your definition of yourself. It's what it means to you. And I think anybody who's been to Penn State has a very strong emotional tie to the place. And to sit here a year after those things that happened a year ago is, I was as stunned as anybody else to watch it unfold.
Yeah, but Gene, do you feel that Penn State football had this air of privacy around them and a code of silence, and that it also touched upon the Sandusky?
I think it did, Franco, and I think it does. And again, thank you for having me. And also, congratulations on having a theater named after you. I didn't realize that was going on, really.
Is your mic on? Where'd you turn on?
Turn your mic on, Gene.
How do we do that? Try it again.
Shall I restate all that? Franco asked me if I thought there was a culture of kind of secrecy at Penn State, and then I thanked him for having me and for having a theater named after him. I do, I can tell you this, when I was, soon after I graduated from Penn State in 1975, and let me differentiate myself from most of the presenters here today. I mean, I always knew there are really smart people at Penn State, and, you know, you've really demonstrated that today. I'm not among you. I'm a graduate, but I'm not, I was not on the honor roll. And I've just been called a moron here in public, so that's another thing. So.
But are you a Pitt fan?
But no. But to answer the question, Franco, and thank you again. One of the first jobs I had as a journalism graduate at Penn State, the first important beat I had was to cover Penn State football. It was in 1978. And I was able to talk my editor at the Philadelphia Journal into sending me up there for a week prior to the opening game that year. It was against Temple. Penn State had a great team. So there figured to be a lot of interest in Penn State, in the Philadelphia area where I worked. And so I went up there, and I didn't know really how Penn State football worked. I had just been a fan to that point. Franco was a senior when I was a freshman. So, and I really did not know what I was doing as a journalist, or as you've heard, I still don't. But in that week before the Temple game, I called the Public Relations Department at Penn State, and I said, "Well, I'm Gene Collier from the Philadelphia Journal, and I'm going to be here all week, and I'd like to read some stories about the football team in advance of the Temple game." And they said, "Well, that's great. We're glad to have you, and just let us know if there's anything we can do for you." And I said, "Okay, well, when is practice?" And they said, "Practice is closed." I said, "Today?" They said, "No, forever. Practice is closed." Practice is closed." And I said, "So I'll be interviewing people on the phone." They said, "Yeah, we'll call you there," at the, it was the Sheraton. And I said, "Well, good, call the pool, this is going to be a good week." You know? And Franco, that did not change, and has not changed.
Why, right? Why that? You know, because of incident that happened where people came and they spied and turned over?
Well, yeah, I mean, definitely, I mean, I don't want to single out Penn State for this, but football coaches are very suspect of everybody who's on the field and those kinds of things. But Penn State's always really held all its cards very close to the vest. I used to joke with Ben O'Cook that this is kind of like covering the Kremlin. You know, Sarah Jane Fraley of the Philadelphia Inquirer was the first female beat reporter at Penn State. That's when they actually closed the locker room after games. Prior to that, locker room was open after the games, but they did not want Sarah Fraley in there, which is the, you know, which is the civil rights metaphor for, okay, everybody in the back of the bus.
Yeah, but if you look at Joe being old school that way, that was very important for him, because Joe did not want to have a situation with his young men. He was very concerned about his young men, not so much that reporter. And, you know, that being the case, you know, because being in the pros, that happened for a while, too. And so guys would walk around naked while a female reporter is there. And then they changed that and put everybody outside then. But that was a very touchy situation.
Well, he certainly had his reasons, and he's entitled to, he's running the program. But, you know, even today, Graham Spanier has, you know, gotten waivers from the sunshine law that apply to Penn State. I mean, they're very careful about what gets out, and, you know, as long as they can get away with it, they're going to get away with it.
All right, so, I'm sorry.
You know, it raises an interesting point, because we're now in a new era of Penn State governance, so it's called openness and transparency.
Right.
Hopefully, we can in fact...
Good luck with that.
Tell me about it. But we're hoping at some point that we can in fact be open and transparent, but I suspect, as I said publicly at an NCAA function, we've heard about the culture problem at Penn State, but in fact, the culture problem wasn't with the football program, the culture problem rests with the Board of Trustees, and the insular nature of the board and the way it conducts business. Now, I'm going to be assailed for saying this yet again, but I really believe it to be true. I really believe it to be true. I've been on the board since July 1st, and I think we're challenged. We're clearly challenged. And I think that it's going to take a great deal of work and effort on the part of all of us in order for this institution to move forward, in order for us to operate openly and transparent. It's not going to happen tomorrow, or next year, or the following year. But I do have great hope that at some point, we will get there, we may never get there completely, because there are some matters that you really can't discuss openly. But by and large, a $4.3 billion institution with 19 branch campuses and about 100,000 students, all of these venues, we have an obligation to conduct ourselves more than just like a corporation, because we're not. We get $267 million from the state, that's probably going to go down next year, so we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard. And so, in a lot of respects, what's happened here over the last year, good for us. We were asleep, we're awake now. We need to make sure this never happens again. And I don't mean the Jerry Sandusksys of the world. Jerry Sandusky was, he was a model molester, if there's such a thing. Talk to the psychologists. He got away with it because, they do, because they're good at it. If we have learned one thing from this, though, it's that this is a societal problem. As it pertains to Penn State, there's still a lot to be learned. And as a trustee, I hope that we can bring it out, but to the point of openness and transparency, there's no question, we have a lot of work to do, but I do think, as long as this community remains engaged, we will get there.
And I think Gene wrote an article about, you know, an article about that, about how the sexual predator can be around for just a long time, and no one knows. You want to?
No, I agree with...
Well, I think, Franco, what happens here is these are the kinds of crimes that are invisible. They happen right in front of your eyes, and you don't see them. These people operate in secrecy. They project an image, a personality, whatever you call it, it's a perfect cover, they're camouflaged. Jerry Sandusky was a saint, he was the Mail Mother Teresa of Central Pennsylvania, until we found out he wasn't. And the challenge for us is, well, how do you prevent a crime that you can't see? How do you fight a man in a war if he's not wearing a uniform, if you can't tell the civilians from the military people? So it takes a special focus on, I think, everybody's part, to recognize, one, that these kinds of things can happen. If it can happen up here, it can happen anywhere. It's a cautionary tale for anybody in the country.
But wait a minute, you wrote a book saying there was a cover-up in this?
No, you could read the book to me, and you find the word "cover-up," you underline.
So you don't believe there was a cover-up, then?
It was culture, a cover-up to crime, right.
I thought it was you that didn't believe there was a cover-up.
Yeah, you're the one who came up with the cover-up.
I came up with the cover-up?
It was in the film.
I believed that there was a cover-up.
No, you believed there was no cover-up.
Chapter nine of your book is entitled "Cover-Up."
All right, well...
Thank you.
And, let me see, we'll get back to that in a...
Let's get back to that? Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the play?
Well, as a lawyer, would you say that's a legal definition?
No, like, I want to ask Bob, because, you know, Penn State, a lot of people, you know, want to distance themselves from Joe Paterno, right? I mean, Penn State took him off of everything, you can't find Joe anywhere on that, so why did you put Joe in the front of the cover here?
That was, and where's George? He asked me that question. And I didn't, because it's the publishing company's decision what to put on the cover. So they picked the picture of Joe Paterno to put on the cover.
So you've issued a statement criticizing them for that, I'm sure?
No, I did not.
Why do you think they did that, though? Why do you think they put Joe in the cover?
For a very practical reason, obviously.
It sells.
Yeah, it's a media culture. I mean, you have...
We know the answer. So you're a sellout, you're a sellout, is what you're saying.
Are you in the media?
Now, also, inside the book, there were a lot of Joe Paterno pictures with this. So, like, did this really get to be a Joe Paterno scandal?
I, no. What I see it as, this was a crime story for me. A crime happened here, a terrible crime. And then there was, you look at the actions, inactions, or whatever you want to call it, that made it worse, it became a tragedy. It's a crime and a tragedy. I don't think anybody's going to dispute that.
Well, you know, I ask people when they talk about Joe's all-knowing, right? And I mean, that's part of what you guys talk about, Joe knows everything. And that Joe knew about Jerry being a sexual predator and was covering it up, that's what people claim. And I ask people that, have you ever heard during this past year of one person coming forward, one person coming forward and saying that they knew Jerry Sandusky was a pedophile? Have any of you heard of one person?
I haven't.
Nope.
At the time he was doing it? No.
And, like, it's amazing, and where, but they say this is a cover-up, and everybody knew, even though, as you said, how many people knew about this?
Well, within 72 hours of the 2001 incident, 14 people had some knowledge of it, including the chief of police at Penn State. Think about that for a minute.
So, when you...
What kind of cover-up is that?
Right, so when you look at that, you know, so how do we start to change this narrative that this was not a cover-up? Nobody knew around Penn State. Now, one thing that we kind of alluded to was that it takes that first victim to come forward, and until that one victim comes forward, nobody knows. And until that victim came forward at Central High, but then again, we, you know, we knew that there was a victim in '98. And when you look at 1998, and the information here is that, why do you feel they vacated Joe's games from 1998?
Well, I mean, I can't speak for the NCAA. I mean, I've heard their reasons as much as you have. I think they picked the date because that's when there was an investigation first done. I mean, how can vacating the victories of a coach, or the players who earned that on the field, help to relieve or resolve this issue? I'm still a little lost to explain that.
Well, because, you know, how did this get to be Penn State? Gene, I want to mention that the press started to say that this Penn State thing was the biggest scandal in college sports history. Biggest scandal in college sports history. What do you think made this that biggest scandal in college sports history?
Well, I mean, I think, I know a lot of you have a low opinion of the press, but you'd be surprised to learn that you actually have an inflated opinion of the press. You think of the press as this kind of monolith that all meets in the morning and goes out and destroys people in the afternoon. That's not the way it works, we can barely put one foot in front of the next. So, I mean, what gets said, I mean, the narrative that has emerged and has been highlighted here, I know you're not happy with, but if it's, if you're trying to differentiate, Franco, between a sports scandal and a...
Was it a sports scandal according to you?
Well, you know, I don't think that the football program gave Sandusky unfettered access to the university. I think Old Main did that. So, in my view, it is a Penn State scandal, yeah.
Just to remind people, though, Baylor University basketball program covered up one player killing another, okay? Now, and I'm not into comparing scandals, but to arbitrarily say, without evidence, that this is the worst scandal, as Sports Illustrated has done numerous times, in the history of college sports, is ridiculous. The only reason why it was, is because it was the best-selling scandal in the history of college sports.
Well, I'm not going to yell. You can take that up with Sports Illustrated. That's not what I said. I mean, I've written, since this happened a year ago last week, I've written maybe 10 columns on it. And, you know, I'm not going to be lumped in with everything you think is unfavorable about this. I mean, I'm sure that disappoints you, but I'm sorry.
Now, do you feel that Penn State football, do you think Penn State should have canceled their football?
I wrote twice that I think Penn State should have suspended the program. The first time I did it, well, both times I did it with the safety net, that you know, and I know, that such a thing would never happen. But the reason I wrote it is because I don't think anything short of that would have telegraphed, would have shown people that Penn State took this as seriously as it might take it. What is that, I mean, we've seen tons of convincing evidence here about the Center County Child and Youth Services Office, the Department of Public Welfare, they're all part of the culture that they don't want to find these things out about somebody like Jerry Sandusky. If you separate football from that culture for a time, I thought it would have been beneficial. I'm not the only one who said this, plenty of people reached that same conclusion.
And, you know, in your article, you talked about, and trying to think who that was, but received some of the highest accolades, right? And Jerry, as we know, received some of the highest accolades, like, I think he got the points of life...
He was one of President Bush's 1,000 points of life.
President Bush, you know, he was assistant coach, Coach of the Year. So you look at this sort of stuff, and this is, and this gets to be part of it, but then everybody thinks that everybody has to know what was going on. And Bob, as you said, and also Gene, is that it is a great cover-up that they do. I mean, they fit in very well, you know, into their environment, and, you know, people would least expect some of the people.
Franco, on that issue, I think that the thing that keeps getting lost in the shuffle is that the very people who are trained to investigate these sorts of people investigated Jerry Sandusky in 1998 without any intervention from Penn State, and let him walk out the door. I don't know how that, and I guess, Gene and Bob, I'll ask you guys, I mean, how is that not the story? How is the state's dropping the ball? This is the agency charged with investigating child abuse. They have him saying, "I wish I was dead." They're hiding in his closet, and yet, nobody's writing that story.
Well, then how do you know it if no one's written it?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, then how do you know it if no one's written it?
It's in the police report.
And that's the only way you know.
That's how I wrote it.
It's never been in the media.
Not in any detail. Nobody's dug. Nobody's dug the way they dug for Joe Paterno's stories. Nobody's dug the way they dug into Mike McQuary.
You know what, and like, I guess it gets to this point here, is that by putting the focus on Joe Paterno, did it take the focus off of everything else, of anyone else?
Well, can I, I want to jump in on the larger picture of the storyline and the alleged cover-up, because without the cover-up, you're not calling for Penn State to be shut down for football, and you're not writing a book with a chapter entitled "Cover-Up." I have, there's several questions, there's three questions you guys will never be able to answer, and if you can, I'll give you whatever money's in my wallet right now. And I'm unfortunately a documentary filmmaker, not a filmmaker in Los Angeles, so it's not that much. But if you can answer these three questions, I will give you the contents of what's in my wallet. The first is, if there was a cover-up, why was Mike McQuary allowed to testify, and why is he not claiming to be part of a cover-up in his whistleblower lawsuit, which would enhance the amount of money he could get exponentially from Penn State? That's number one. Number two, if there was a cover-up after 10 years of allowing Jerry Sandusky to molest boys, why did Joe Paterno, at the age of 84, not go into the grand jury and say, "I don't remember"? He was a god, the grand jury would have believed anything he would have said at that point. Why would he blow up his own cover-up? And if Tim Curley was part of a cover-up led by Joe Paterno, which destroyed his reputation, his career, and potentially put him behind bars, close to death, when Paterno died, why would Tim Curley release a statement praising Paterno's honor and integrity? Can you answer any of those three questions in a way that makes any sense at all?
Well, you know, like, I want to...
The only thing I can say is decaf.
That's right, it's me. It's because, it's my fault that you can't answer the question, because it makes me angry that you guys created a false narrative when you can't, they won't answer the questions.
Did not create any false narrative. I don't know what you're talking about.
Answer my questions!
Okay, we're going...
One of them! You can't do it! And without those answers...
Hey, John, I'll run this.
Okay.
All right, I'll run this, okay?
Well, let me just say this, you're very anxious to show the failings of DPW CCYS. You're not?
I am.
You are?
I certainly am.
And they should be. They should be held to the fire, because they failed these kids. But you're not as receptive to the idea that Penn State failed anybody.
That's not the case at all. Nobody has said that. What we've said is that the trained professionals aren't even being looked at. How about the second mile?
I agree with that, Steve.
I mean, let's find out exactly what happened before we crucify somebody.
Okay, well, we're here, I'm sorry, Franco, I know I'm interrupting at this point, but here we are, we're a year from this, and we're presenting these facts as though, almost as though this is the truth and it is the end, where it is not. I mean, there are trials to come, many of these answers are going to come forward. All I'm saying is, what comes forward is...
So you're saying you prematurely wrote that Penn State football should be shut down because we don't know all the facts yet? And you wrote a book prematurely?
Anthony, it's hard to believe that a year ago yesterday, the board that you now sit on fired Joe Paterno.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the person who really put this together today, Dana. Because we all know without Dana, Franco would forget his credit cards. Oh, that's right.
Or pick up Anthony's bill, that's right.
Well, it's been a year, it's hard to imagine, it's gone very quickly. A lot's happened over the course of the year, but yet, in many respects, we've not made any progress, at least from the... At least from the vantage point of my mind convincing others that we really need to understand what it's going to take for our community to heal and move forward. I think it's, it's a, a corporate mindset that has us moving forward as if the past is already the past, it's done, there's nothing we can do about it, we can't change it, without first trying to understand how we got to this point. Because I don't think we can solve any of these societal problems until we understand how we got here. You know, pedophilia, child molestation, isn't new. It is a societal problem, but by the grace of God, it didn't happen in other places. It happened at Penn State in some respects. Actually, that's, it's a, it's a good thing, because we're such a, a caring community. We're a passionate community. And, and whether or not we like the fact that we were, made the lead for this, we are the lead, and we're going to take it to a level never before seen, and at some point, we're going to be very proud of that accomplishment. I know it's hard for us, myself included at this point, to sit here feeling like I've been painted with that broad brush, that I'm somehow responsible for Jerry Sandusky's bad behavior, because I'm not. Any psychologist you talk to will tell you, you're responsible for your own behavior. Jerry was responsible for his behavior. Now, I, I agree, and I think all of you agree, we want to know what happened, how did it happen?
Yeah, but we're paying dearly for it right now.
We are, Franco, and, and, you know, it gets back to the issue of leadership. In the absence of, of leadership, it's very difficult for us as an institution to make any progress on that front. It's much simpler for us to just say, "Okay, that's behind us, we're moving forward." It's just not going to happen. So, we're here a year later, and in many respects, we haven't made any progress. But, I am convinced, because I, I, I do know this Penn State community now, having spent a lot of time with you over the past year, that we won't stop until we've made a difference. You, you're, you're right when you say it's hard for us to accept the notion that maybe we have culpability in this. It is, and it's an emotional issue. But I think it, it's, it's been fueled in large part by, in fact, that we took an icon, the media took an icon, Joe Paterno, and they, and they knocked him down, because it was convenient, it was easy, and it was a story that sold, without really giving any consideration to some of these other points. A presentment that had inflammatory language we now know was untrue. Boards on prosecutorial misconduct, how did that happen? An organization responsible for these young children, why aren't they being held responsible? Public organizations in DPW and Child Youth Services, why aren't they being held responsible? Why is it all Penn State's? And I think that's what we're feeling. So, it's been a year, seems like we haven't made progress.
Yeah, but Anthony, you asked that question, but didn't we punish ourselves? Okay, so-
Oh, we met the enemy and they're us, no question.
So, it wasn't like, you know, was it Penn State? Our own people said it was Penn State.
We, we did. We, you know, again, that night when I was yelling at the television set, I couldn't understand how, and I wasn't a trust either, I couldn't understand how we could accept this 23-page document as gospel. Especially since a number of those folks are attorneys and have practiced in this area. They know better. And moreover, they had experience with Joe, over 61 years' experience, so they knew the man. And last but not least, the coup de grâce, to show up at his house with a note, say, "Call this phone number," and not even give the man the decency to have a conversation, which I do believe they regret, but it's done. So, yes, I think we are in large part responsible.
Anthony, let me just ask you this then. Uh, when you talk about the grand jury presentation and the Free Report as being accepted at face value, and then the NCAA sanctions being accepted at face value. Um, now, I should, I would like to mention that regarding the NCAA sanctions, the columns I've written on this are at odds with the original columns. I, I think the NCAA sanctions are psychotic. Um, they pull out this figure from the air, $60 million, I mean, why not a billion? Where are they getting, Mark Emmert said that he admires the Free Report. They vacate wins, uh, Joe Paterno wins back to 1998, when I think most of us would agree that 25% of Joe's wins or more were, uh, achieved against schools that were cheating like hell. This is the NCAA overlooking itself and saying Penn State is there. I mean, that, it's, it's preposterous. But, uh, let me just rephrase the, the question. You have the grand jury presentment taken at face value by Penn State. You have the Free Report taken at face value by Penn State, and now you have ridiculous NCAA sanctions that are inspired solely by the Free Report. Mark Emmert saying, "We could not have done as good an investigation as this is," and it's all accepted by Penn State. Why?
That's the, that's the same question that I've been asking. I, I was elected in May, and I began serving my term July 1st, and, uh, I think it's part of the Move Forward campaign. I think it's, it's, it's that culprit, the corporate mindset, where we put it behind us and we just move forward. So, it's a question that I don't have, don't have an answer to. It's a question I'm trying to get an answer to, but in the meantime, you know, we're not resting. You know, that, that the presentment took months for us to unravel. When it was first made, we didn't know that there were factual errors. I mean, how many people in this room know, know that when that presentment was made, that 23-page document, that in fact there were over 10,000 pages of grand jury testimony? None of us knew that.
Well, one of us did.
Well, no, because grand jury's private, so you don't know how many, how many people were in front of the grand jury.
And, and you know, just, uh, in the panel here, that, uh, you know, they talk about, uh, Penn State culture, and, uh, President Emmert of NCAA talked about Penn State football culture, putting it, uh, putting it above education and every, you know, all this sort of stuff. I mean, uh, look at Penn State culture, I mean, don't you think a lot of other colleges would love to have that culture?
Absolutely.
To have at Penn State?
Well, one of the questions I'm going to ask George Mitchell when he appears before us, probably in January, is what suggestions he has to help us improve our 91% graduation rate?
Yeah.
Because we have an academic integrity problem at Penn State, as we all know.
And think about that. 91% academic graduation rate. Last year, 2011, Joe's last year, Penn State was ranked the number-one academic football program in the country. And, and, uh-
Is that for me? Yes, it's been written, yeah.
Then we have 91% graduation rate, and then this, 94% among African-American graduation rates.
And that's the story, by the way, that goes untold. People don't realize. It's, it's, it's not so much the 91%, it's the graduation rate among African-Americans. There's, I think the average is 70% among the general student body, but 56, 55% in African-American population. I mean, it's quite remarkable.
Because Joe would go into, into their house and tell their parent, "Your son's going to graduate." He said that to every player, no matter who. "Your son's going to graduate." And that was number one. Okay, I know, uh, we're getting close, uh, thank you panel. That was wonderful, some wonderful discussion.
Thank you, Franco.
Uh, but we do want to have some time for questions and answers, so-
Wait, before you do that, I want to do something very shameful.
Like, I knew he couldn't. I, I knew it. Go ahead.
You know, both these guys are really good sports for being with us today, all right? So, let's-
There you go.
But, but, you know, what, what-
Game over.
Exactly. What I was going to say to you is, what I've learned over the past year, working with Penn Stateers around the country, is that you're so resourceful, and you are willing to consider other points of view. So, I really think you ought to go out and, and get your hands on that book and read it, because there is some stuff in there that, that I've certainly found enlightening. And I don't think you could ever hurt yourself by having a different point of view, because it may solidify your point of view by considering someone else's, so.
Okay. All right.
You should be on the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Uh, okay, let's open up the question and answers. Anybody have any questions? Please come to the mic. Come on, you guys, come on, you have to get up.
I think it's for Rob principally, and that is to what extent does the 2005 disappearance of Center County District Attorney Ray Grekhar and the apparent slow-tracking of the investigation by the Attorney General and our governor factor into all these matters?
Well, the, the question about Ray Grekhar, boy, if I had that answer, we'd all get wealthy. Um, you know, I think it's, Ray Grekhar was intimately involved in the, in the decision not to prosecute in 1998 after DPW made a, a no, an unfounded determination on the child abuse allegations. There are some unanswered questions, why he interjected himself as one of them. Karen Arnold was the child abuse, uh, that, Assistant District Attorney. She was handling it, and Grekhar stepped into her shoes. Nobody knows why. Uh, nobody knows if there was any further discussions with Grekhar. So, I mean, I, I think, uh, you know, the conspiracy theorists in the world would link Mr. Grekhar's disappearance to, uh, to this. I, I, I've not seen anything to that effect. Relative to the Attorney General's investigation from 2008 to 2011, uh, I think we're going to hear a lot about that in, in the next 24 months. Kathleen Cain got into office in no- in no small part to her stated position that she will find out if it was slow-played, and if it was, why was it slow-played? So, I, I, I don't have a good answer for you, other than to say, "The Attorney General's office has a child predator unit. This was not referred to their child predator unit in 2008." Somebody needs to explain why.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
This is for the two journalists on the panel.
Are there journalists on this panel?
He wasn't talking about you, John.
No, I, I know, I'm just wondering where the journalists, I didn't, I don't think there are any journalists anymore.
Okay. Um, the media, most recently, an editorial in your paper, suggested that Graham Spanier should quit making public statements in defense of himself. And I believe other newspapers have editorialized that Franco's group should cease and desist its efforts. As journalists, doesn't that kind of contradict what you are supposed to do? And I am a journalism graduate, and my wife is a newspaper reporter. Shouldn't the media be encouraging exchange of thought and freedom of speech?
Bob?
I, I think they do encourage freedom of speech and, 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 but if, you know, it gets to a point where you're in a legal situation, and, now, listen, I'm not going to defend the editorial board of the Post-Gazette, because that's way above my pay scale. That, that operates in a different environment altogether for me.
And mine.
Yeah, and what their reasons were for that, I don't know. Uh, except that it seemed to me that Graham Spanier was actually damaging his own credibility by the statements he was making. Maybe it was just a practical suggestion, uh, for him. I mean, he's got his own issues to deal with now. I mean, who didn't see that coming after, uh, the events of the last couple of months? And, you know, there are so many, so many issues out there that don't have answers at this point, that this is going to be a process to get answers.
And, you know, I'd like to chime in and just say that, uh, when Corbett asks about the investigation and, and, and about, uh, Curly and Schultz and everybody saying that they're innocent, he makes this statement that, "Well, everybody says they're innocent." And like, I think he says it in a way as, "Nobody should say that they're innocent." That's what I mean, where no one should say they're innocent. And that's the way it comes across to me, how he's saying it. And then when we look at all, some of this past stuff, you know, what happened at Duke, what happened to this high school kid, you know, and there's, there's so many examples of, uh, of, of things happened that were wrong. And, and, and so we, that's a very good question, because, you know, people have to, they're innocent until they're proven guilty, and we have lost that right now.
I also, I also think it's incumbent upon all of us to challenge authority in a respectful way. I mean, it is our obligation. It's what democracy's based on.
And you know what? And, and I want to say another thing, that the new, like, the new NCAA, NCAA regulations, to me, I read it where you have to prove that you're innocent. You have to prove that you're innocent. The NCAA does not have to prove that you're wrong. That should scare people. Very frightening. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Franco.
I see it.
Uh, I would just like to ask John to add two, or three words to his statement about the media. Present company accepted. Uh, I spent 50 years of my life as a member of the media. I first met Joe Paterno when I came up to Penn State to interview him on a documentary that I produced when the Steelers drafted Franco for his first year. Uh, I spent time with Joe Paterno whenever he was, uh, involved in a documentary called "The Paterno Strategy," where we focused on Joe's not only interest in football, but interest in the fact that these athletes would get their education, and if they didn't keep their grade levels up, they didn't play football. We, we focused on all of that. Now, somebody may have mentioned about they thought the Penn State Board of Trustees wet their pants. I think the NCAA wet their pants first, and that was, that was a, an action that had happened.
So, you want me to say two or three words about the media?
Yeah, like-
Good luck with that.
Present company accepted.
Yeah.
Because I spent 50 years, I have, I have your job. I've, I've produced as many documentaries or probably way more than you have.
Okay, well-
And, uh, every one of them was with integrity and dignity and honesty.
And, and I'm sure they were, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Here's the deal with the media real quick, as, as quickly as I can, but not in three or four words. The media's fundamentally changed because of technology. We now have overnight television ratings and instantaneous internet traffic reports that take judgment out of the hands of so-called journalists and media people, and now they know for sure which stories hit and which stories do not. And for the first two days of this particular scandal, the Jerry Sandusky scandal was not hitting. And as a fact, I paid $9,000 for the closed captioning of every television network from November 5th through November 10th of last year. I could barely find mentions on Saturday and Sunday of this story. But then on Monday, when the story became Joe Paterno, bam, internet traffic, overnight TV ratings exploded. Journalists no longer make decisions about judgment as to what is actually newsworthy and what the facts are, they don't care. It's about what's best for them in the next 24 hours. 24 hours is the long view for media in this day and age. They have all sold their souls, because it's now a business. It's not about the truth. That's the reality.
But, you know, John, and I, and I don't disagree generally with what's happened to the business, having owned broadcasting properties in my life, but, but these two guys have been around a long time, and they've seen this business evolve. So, I, I'm not going to paint them with the same broad brush as I might paint some of the other folks who are out there on the blogs, reporting Joe's death Saturday when he dies on Sunday, and having CBS confirm his death by referring to the blog that incorrectly reported his death. Because it's no longer about being correct, it's about being first. There are still some guys around who do have integrity, and whether or not we like the stories that they write, we can challenge them. And that's the beauty of, of a forum like this, is we have the opportunity to have respectful interaction. We, we can walk away with the same opinion we had when we walked in, but at least we got to hear them, and we treated them respectfully, so. You know, I, I've been around a lot of journalists in my life too, and I've talked to, I call them the old timers.
Right, and just a follow-up on Gene's statement about, you know, why this, you know, why they accepted this, accepted that, accepted this? Because they wanted to prove that they were right. And basically, that's what it was. I mean, they made a decision, and now they wanted to prove and evidence to back up their decision.
I'll, I'll take it even one step further. We, somebody mentioned CYA earlier. There's a lot of CYA going on. Remember, there are six people on that board appointed by the governor. All right, DPW is a state agency, there are three secretaries of state agencies on that board. There are a lot of people who were on that board who had knowledge of some sort about what went on. Okay? By diverting the attention to Joe Paterno and the football program, they kept the attention off of themselves and what they did and didn't do.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we'll take one more question.
All right. I- Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more for the press. You seem to think it's reasonable to connect Joe's closed practices, his blowing off of the, um, press after Rose Bowl with the charge that he's a pedophile. You think there's a connection there?
I'm sorry, I don't understand that question.
You don't understand that question?
Joe blown off the press during the Rose Bowl at halftime, he blew off the press. Bob, I think you wrote that in your, your book, and-
He closes his practices. You write those, what is the relevance of those to the Sandusky?
I was answering Franco's question about a culture of secrecy.
What's the relevance of that to the Sandusky case? What's the relevance of that to the Sandusky case?
I don't know.
He wasn't...
But you made the point in your book.
Bob?
You did.
Yeah, there is a, if you create an environment where you're not challenged, where you have total control, and no, there's no in or out, you know, my practices are closed, I run my shop, I run it my way, is it not a danger that there's nobody there to tell Joe, "No", if he wants to make a decision, or if he says, there's nobody there to contradict him, where he's set up the ultimate power? And I think it's the oldest cliche in the world, ultimate power corrupts absolutely.
Okay, I hear your answer. I don't accept it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one, okay, last question. Last question, guys.
Thank you. Franco, first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership.
No, these are...
And Anthony, I'm counting on yours, all right? Here's my question. I'm a results-oriented kind of guy, so I'll ask this. What is our next actions here? Other words, how do we fill this room with the folks from CNN and Sports Illustrated and ESPN who've chosen to hear their part of the story but need to hear this part of the story? How do we do that?
Well, we hope this is a start. And as, you know, John always said that, that when it broke with Joe Paterno's name, it went crazy. And now it's kind of down, you know, you know, this died down a little bit. So you're right. I mean, we have to get out here and make this new information available to people. So we're hoping that this is the start. John, you have anything you want to say?
Well, my effort has been that there's only one way to tell this story, because it's a very complex story. You can't do it in 30-second sound bites. You can't do it in a five-minute television appearance. It's got to be in video, and it's got to be in a full-length documentary. I've dedicated the last six months of my life to creating what you saw earlier, which is a very small summary of what a larger documentary would be. I can get this story into major theaters across the country, on every on-demand system in the country, on Netflix, Hulu, and every other internet venue, but we need support. We don't know if that support exists. If it does, I'll continue to dedicate my life to this because I believe in the truth. I'm not making any money out of this. My career's destroyed because of this, but I believe in this, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, and...
How can we help?
And like, also, I want to say, I'm sure some books could help too. You know what I mean? So, you know, hopefully there'll be other versions of new books coming out and different things like that, that...
[laughter]
You know, no, no, I'm talking about, you know, now it has to be other books to come out. A lot has happened in a year, guys, and there was so much false information out there that people had to go buy. And we understand that. And, you know, thanks to people like, you know, Eileen and Ray, Rob, you know, Anthony, you know, all these, you know, all these guys were finding new information. And that's the whole thing, is to enlighten everybody and to, and to, you know, find the truth.
I want to add just one tidbit about one of the presenters, because the presenter didn't really share much about her background, when Franco alluded to the handout where you could read it yourself. But, again, from my experience working with folks this past year in the Penn State community, they're smart, they're resourceful, they're dedicated. And I certainly know that unfortunately for some people, they've underestimated that. But one such person presented today, Eileen Morgan, by education and training, do you know she's a rocket scientist?
Yes.
I kid you not. All right, that's the quality of person we have in this community working on these things.
I thought you said about me, Anthony.
No, I think I said, "You're not a rocket scientist."
Rocket head, right? Okay. Hey, you know, we're going to, you know, just finish up here. And I, you know, just want to say one more thing about, it's interesting that, how people make things happen. And when you look at this, when, and talking about Mike McQuary going with Joe, because a lot of this focuses right on that, you know, it focuses on Mike and what he told Joe, and that's what people base a lot of things on. And I think about that, and I say, "Well, Mike McQuary didn't ask Joe to call the cops that night, okay? He didn't ask him that." And I guess you're like, you know, three months later, Paterno asked McQuary about his going to Curley and Schultz. He asked McQuary, no, McQuary, I mean, Paterno asked McQuary if he was satisfied with the outcome, just three months later, was he satisfied with the outcome? And McQuary said he was fine with it. That's what Mike McQuary said. So if McQuary wasn't, if he wasn't fine with that, and when Joe asked that question, if he would have said to Joe, "No, I am not fine with this. This is not right. It's not going the way like it should be going," knowing Joe, everything would have changed. Thanks for being here, guys. All right, we'll keep going.
Upon further review, the call has been overturned.